And welcome to the Byram Hills Board of Education meeting for November 7, 2017. Please join us for the pledge.
The pledge is to declare the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Before we begin, can I have a motion to appoint Jen Lamy as District Clerk pro temp?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thanks again, Jen, for doing that. And just for the record, called the meeting to order at 7 o'clock when we went into executive session, and we discussed five items. 3.1, which was a legal matter, individual employee. 3.2, personnel matter, individual employee. 3.3, negotiations matter, CSEA. 3.4 was a negotiations matter, BHTA. And 3.5, personnel matter, individual employee. Since there's nobody in the public, I will assume that there are no matters that anybody in the public wants to discuss that are not on tonight's agenda. So can I have a motion? Well, actually, there is one change to our agenda, just on consent. Here. Oh, thank you. 6.2 is just a name change only. So can I have a motion to approve our agenda with the revision?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? And can I have a motion to approve our consent agenda for personnel, special services, and business?
So moved.
And a second? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. And that brings us to unfinished business. We have three policies for a first read. I think I want to separate them. Is that okay? Just so we can take them one at a time? So the first one is going to be Policy 4750, which is Promotion and Retention of Students. Did you want to talk to that, Tim Marchand?
Sure, yeah. So I'm just opening this one up so I can take a look. So this one is Promotion and Retention of Students. There were a few changes to this. Looking at the last update, we just made a couple changes to some language in here that was required. So first of all, this had to reference RTI, which was not previously in this, which there was some introduction of RTI in the state regs. So we cleared up that language. And then we had an issue in here, just recalling what it is.
Instructional support team was also a language.
Right, there was a couple languages. So the main change for this was, if you recall, that the state had changed the policy on not being able to use standardized tests, not using standardized tests within the promotion. It's the sole reason for promotion and retention of students. That was a regulation change a couple years ago, so this policy is to reflect that change in state regulations, so that standardized tests can't be used primarily or solely in decisions of promotion and retention. So that was the main reason to open this up. We made a few other language changes, including RTI.
So I just had a question on what it's called. It's called Promotion and Retention of Students. Should it be promotion or retention of students? And? I mean, I guess when I was looking at retention, I kept reading further and further into this, I was thinking retention meaning so that they don't drop out.
No, retention is holding students.
Holding them back, right.
Yeah.
So should it be? I guess it's just semantics. I guess it doesn't really matter, promotion or retention, as opposed to promotion and retention. It sounds like you're talking about the same thing, but I guess it doesn't really matter.
Well, the policy is for the promotion of students and for the retention of students.
Not that we want them to...
Yeah, so I guess it isn't an either or.
It's not a policy for one or the other.
For the other.
It's a policy for both of them.
One is on what are the...
Right, right, right.
Just a semantic.
What regulates the promotion and what regulates retaining students.
I would assume this is what NISBA calls it?
Yes, yeah, it is the NISBA.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had a quick question, because when I was reading through the elementary, middle, and secondary, it just struck me that the one that had the least amount of explanation in a way is secondary. And it says you have several factors, and it doesn't give as much specificity in terms of, you know, what happens with remedial plans. So is that intentional, because there's just more factors that you want to deal with on a case-by-case basis, or is it just that it's worth revisiting?
Yeah, at the secondary level, it's very regulated by credit accumulation and the requirements. So it's actually more clear and spelled out behind this because of the rules that govern...
Diplomats.
Yeah, that govern diploma requirements. And then there's a whole process with guidance counselors that are part of that process to, when we do scheduling each year, there's a whole review of student transcripts, and they have a whole process in place for that.
And is that the cross-reference that's on here, which is attendance policy? Is that what you got all that is?
Well, attendance could impact...
Promotion.
Promotion. So that's why that's in here, the reference to that.
But that's where it's all spelled out, I believe, right? Because I remember going through that policy before.
Yeah, so credit accrual, you know, the secondary level's really governed by diploma requirements, which is overseen by the Guidance Department, and they have a whole process for that. We didn't spell that out in this particular one. It could be something we could put in language regarding that, but we have a strong process...
But I think if the state changes, then we have to change the policy. So we just, sort of similar to not putting law and policy, what we can avoid.
Yeah, in terms of this policy, you have to accrue so many credits, and you have to meet these governing criteria on the diploma requirements.
And then the other question, just a small one, but where we say reading and EOA, is it, is that, is that purposeful, or is that? This is in the middle school, sorry. It says reading, EOA, mathematics, social studies, and science. Should we just say ELA, or is that specifically reading?
You know, when you think about sixth grade, they have a class that's spoken.
Yeah.
So that would cover reading.
Because we call that literature type of thing.
I never heard it called reading. That's why I didn't know it was, I never heard it called reading. So I guess that's...
Yeah, I think it's probably okay, because we can get away with that.
Any other comments on that? Okay, so, oh, actually, can I have a motion? I did this check. Can I have a motion to adopt as a first read, 5460, Promotion and Retention of Students? So, can you say? All in favor? First read, so I guess we'll see it again, even though we didn't make changes.
Yep.
Okay. And then we're going to talk about policy. My glasses on, my eyes are so tired, I can't see anymore. 5460, child abuse, male treatment, or neglect in a domestic setting.
Right. So this policy was just revising, adopted in 2015, just two years ago. We opened it up based on NISBA's recommendation to include, that we have to publicize and post in each of our buildings, the toll-free number for reporting child abuse and neglect through the central register. So that's why this was added. So the rest of the policy was really great. I met with the principals and reviewed all this to make sure that we are following these procedures. And I will make sure that that information is posted in all the buildings. We've had the assistant principals do an evaluation of that, and we do have to make sure this is posted. It's not in every building right now. So I'm going to make sure that's done.
Any other questions or comments? Can I have a motion to approve as a first read, 5460, child abuse, male treatment, or neglect in a domestic setting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, and the last one for tonight is the 8505, which is meal charge.
This was a big one, because this is new. Anything new, starting from scratch. Although we did have a solid policy in place, that followed a lot of what was required. So we were in really good shape. So this is putting into, I think this was coming about because now we have, now that we have automated systems for students charging meals, they're not bringing cash all the time. What's happening is, what happens when that balance goes below zero? How do we handle that? How do districts handle that in terms of both accounting purposes and with the child? And when it goes below zero, how are districts, are you not serving students a meal? And things like that were coming up. So the state clarified this policy. So what this guideline is saying is how we account for charged meals, and we do allow charges to go below zero to a certain amount, and there is a mechanism to communicating with parents regarding that. We also, once the balance gets to a particular level, which I believe now is set at $15, there is an email that is sent to parents that reminds them to replenish the accounts. We just switched to an email system. Before, it was literally letters that would be sent. So Airmark would print a letter, put it in the mail, send it to parents. By then, the child had already eaten a few times, and it would be going below zero, and it was taking a long time. Since this year, we've converted to the automated system. I've gotten a report that we are getting much quicker response to replenishing accounts. So that's been a really great thing.
I mean, you can't, you can't require parents to do the auto-pay, right? You can't require that.
You don't cost a charge, you have a credit card, something so such.
Right.
So there's...
It is.
So there are, so this is outlining the procedures, and then what do we do at the end of the year if there are accounts below zero? What happens if a child leaves the district and there's money left in the account? This policy is covering those procedures. I've met with our food service personnel. We've reviewed this several times. We reviewed what the legislation was to make sure we are complying currently, and that our policy is matching the practice, and that the practice is matching the guidelines or the law. So we feel good about it. This went through a couple meetings of the policy committee. They worked hard on making sure this was complying. We asked a lot of follow-up questions and did some homework on this to make sure that this was really a solid policy, that we could actually implement well, and that served our kids well. One thing the state is concerned about, you don't want to deny kids a meal as well. You know, so if a balance is below, we're going to not tell a kid they can't eat, that we, so that's all built into the policy, and that was part of the policy as well, is making sure every kid gets a meal.
Make sure there's no shaming or other...
Exactly.
Right, yeah.
Yep, and we do that. It's very discreet on telling kids, and the auto-pay, you know, or writing emails to the parents is helping. So we don't have to run to the kid saying, "Tell your parent to replenish the account." We don't want to do that.
I think number four, under the compliance with state guidelines, is getting at the accounting treatment.
Yeah.
But definitely, when I read it, even with accounting, I gotta say...
So it took us a few times to unpack that. I think I understand it now.
Is it going to be in here, though?
It does.
The reason that's in there, and what I now understand, and I think this is what happens, if I can explain it in a simple way, is that we actually, the district gets reimbursed for meals. For every meal that a student purchases, a full nutritious meal, the state gives us money, or the federal government gives us money for that. And it's on a sliding scale based on need. So if you have high-need students, we get more reimbursement for every meal. So if you imagine that your account goes below zero and you're actually charging it, the state only reimburses one meal per child per day. So what do you do with the charged account? Does that count on that day, or does it count on the day that the account's replenished? If it's counted on the day it's replenished, so I technically could charge my meal on Monday. On Tuesday, my count's replenished, and I order a meal. That charged meal has to count for Monday, because they can't count it twice on Tuesday, or we won't get reimbursed for both meals.
It's for their accounting purposes.
It's for accounting and for reimbursement from the government.
I had to have it explained to you a lot of times.
Yeah.
I think I understand it. I obviously didn't do a good job teaching it that way.
It's fine, just the meal gets recorded. Meal gets recorded on Monday if it was purchased on Monday, because if you just say on Friday, now we're billing the kid on Friday for five meals, and the kid's paying on Friday, we can only get reimbursed for one meal if we try to bill them all on the same day.
But we still have to say à la carte in here when charges are...
Yes, because we only get reimbursements on meals, not on à la carte items. Because they want us, the government wants to make sure we're serving nutritious meals, and that's what they're reimbursing, not on...
So you're not paying.
Exactly. So that's...
You have the good lunch.
It makes full sense to our food service. They're like, yes, this is...
Tim, that was a good explanation.
Okay, thank you.
And then when it, under that same compliance, under number one, when a student's account reaches the district's designated minimum balance, do we need to state where this balance is, and is it, it's not...
We debated that. We, you know, we thought that it might be best if we just have district guidelines, and I review that on a regular basis with our food service.
Makes sense.
We put it in the policy. If we need to change that for some reason, then we have to change the policy. We do have guidelines, and they've been serving us well right now. And I could tell you those numbers if you want to know what they are.
That's okay. I guess I had another question. Under the unpaid meal charges and debt collection, the second paragraph, it talks about, the middle there, it says, "District will discreetly notify the parent guardian of the balance, the process to refill the account, and the district's policy on charging school meals and alternate meals." Does that refer to this policy when you're talking about the district's policy, or is there another policy?
No, it would be this policy, but just outlined in simplified language. So we, Airmark does send letters outlining the policy. So once this policy is approved, I'm going to sit down, and we're going to rewrite that communication, so that it makes sense and meets the policy.
Okay.
To make sure that the language is right.
And then in that same paragraph, it says that unpaid charges remaining at the end of the year, or before their child leaves the district, whichever occurs first, about paying it back?
Mm-hmm. So we make every effort to, if there's, to collect that money at the end of the year. If we don't have it, and we, you know, if the child's coming back the following year, it's eventually going to have to be dealt with. If the child's not coming back, we'll make every effort up to like about three months after the end of the school year. At some point, we just absorb the cost.
Is that, okay, that's all I wanted to ask you, is that?
Yeah. And it's never been an exorbitant...
Right, we're not letting them charge for a year's worth of lunch before we're...
We're not giving it to them.
Right, okay.
But we're not really not giving it, because kids can still eat, it's just...
Yeah, you don't want to die kid a man from eating.
Right.
I think that, that number was like $1,300 or $1,500 or something like that.
It's a small amount.
Full year.
Yeah.
So it's a bad, dead expense or...
Right.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, it's not a runaway issue in our district. I know there was another district down county, I think, that it got really, really bad not too long ago. All right. Anybody else have anything else on this? Thank you. A lot of her work went into this, and you could see that.
Yeah, so take a moment.
Can I have a motion, then, to approve as a first read, 8505 meal charge?
So moved.
Thank you.
And all in favor? Okay, I guess we'll all see these again, then. Nice work. Thank you. That brings us to approval of the Byram Hills Professional Development Plan for 2018. Tim!
I gotta go over there.
Yay!
I'm talking so much today. Let me get my presentation.
And this, Tim, is something that the board has to see every year, you told us, but it has to be sent to SED every two years. Is this the every three years?
We, the board actually approves a PD plan. It says that we have one in place every year, something you sign in the summer. I have you sign an assurance that we do that. And it doesn't need to be adopted on a regular basis. We've chosen every two years. That's something we could decide on the timeframe to update the policy or update the plan. So that's our decision, and we've done it every couple of years.
So at this point, though, tonight, we are going to, you're going to give us a presentation on this, and then we are going to take a vote to approve it, correct?
Yep. So I'll give an overview. I'm just getting my screens right, sorry. One of them's not coming up, so I'll work on that later. So I will go through this, the plan, and I'll talk about the state requirements first. So as Robin was asking, that every year, the board assures the state that we have a professional development plan in place. We rewrite it about every two years or so, because we are changing some structures, and these are what the plan must contain according to the state. So overall, our goals for professional learning, we just want a good system in place where teachers are constantly learning, and it has an impact on student learning in the classroom. That's our goal overall and our mission. So we, here are some principles that we operate on, that we believe are part of the plan, is that we're always reflecting on it. We are, we believe in working together with teachers and administrators, believe that collaboration is the way in which to deliver professional development, that it's embedded in practice, and that it focuses on student learning. Throughout this, I'll give a couple examples of how professional development impacts the classroom. So we have been training on problem-based learning, which is a way to get students to engage in real-life problems and have to solve those problems, and the learning grows out of the exploration of that problem. We've also been doing a lot of training around STEAM, including robotics, coding, and design. So this is an example of all that training coming together. This is a picture from our robotics class. That's one of our new STEAM courses this year, which is using all of those learning, professional learning opportunities we had. That's bringing it to a real impact to kids in the classroom, where it has a direct impact. So I'd like to see how does professional learning impact students in the classroom? And this is just one example of that direct impact. So looking at some of the research on high-quality professional development, I will highlight just a couple things. I won't go through every element. One of these includes around the administration and the leadership of professional development. So one thing that serves us well, and that we really adhere to, is using data to really look at situations and collaborate together to improve. So a collaborative inquiry model means, what isn't quite working? Where is, where are we falling behind based on data? That data can be quantitative or qualitative, and how can we come together and try some ideas so that we see improvement? So professional development that's geared toward looking at student work and then improving is a, is a best practice and a research-based approach to professional learning. Also embedding it in the job. So what this has to do with embedded professional development is getting away from the one-shot or fly-by-night professional development, where you send a teacher off to a workshop, they might learn something, they come back, you never talk to them about it. But type of professional development that sticks, stuff that really changes teacher practice, is when you're doing it in real time as they're teaching. So when teachers learn together, they learn some stuff, they practice in the classroom, they come back together and talk about what they're learning. That is real embedded professional development, when you get them reflecting in real time on their learning. And then working together in a collaborative environment to be active in that process, so they have a real active role of input into their learning, as opposed to someone just telling them what they should be doing. Here's, I have some examples coming up on that. But those are a couple research-based strategies to professional learning. I've shared this with you last year. I gave an overview of our curriculum review cycle. This also impacts the choices we make about what to, what type of professional learning to bring to the district. So for example, you know, we'll be looking at some science courses, because there's some new science standards coming in. So every year, we're looking at some particular aspect of our curriculum, and we go through this four-phase process when we are studying and analyzing our curriculum. So this is something that also drives our professional learning. These are some ways we offer professional development. On the left side are some structures that are embedded into our system, so that we have places where professional learning takes place. On the right side of the screen are some places where we vet and get high-quality professional development delivered. So bringing people in from OCS or through the tri-state consortium, where multiple districts are using them, and they've been vetted by many people. An example of really high-quality professional development embedded in practice has been the work with our middle school math teachers over the past three years, where they've been working with this NYU consultant, where she comes in throughout the school year, looks at tasks, actually goes in the classroom with teachers and models with them and coaches them in real time. And that has a really direct impact on the kids. We've been talking about that. I've shared some examples with you over the years. That's a real direct impact of professional learning on what students are experiencing in the classroom. And looking at a couple more examples of impact through problem-based learning, we've seen, for example, at the end of last year, this project in social studies, where kids did a problem-based unit. All seventh-grade teachers or seventh-grade students participated in this. Recently, I was part, yeah, there you go. Recently, I was part of a colonial reality, a reality, where our students in seventh grade were learning about colonialism. And instead of just, again, the teacher delivering information, this was a problem-based unit, where kids had to sell me some property in colonial times based on what their knowledge of the region. I ended up buying a house on Rhode Island that fit my profile really well. This was a great team who taught me so much. They really understood, they asked themselves really hard questions, and they were able to answer every question. That was a performance, authentic assessment. We've done a lot of training around technology and around STEAM, and you've heard me talk lots about that. The robotics is an example, not just our robotics course, but that's been embedded into many aspects of our curriculum. There's been some design projects at the elementary level that have been part of the STEAM curriculum. Storytelling, even doing literacy in third grade. On the left, that's a picture of some kid telling a story using Chromebooks for drawing pictures. And 3D printing at Coman Hill was part of that training, where students are designing. And then, again, coding and STEAM initiatives at the middle school. All of these activities that had a direct impact on kids came out of professional learning opportunities for teachers. And I'll end with that. There's many examples I could give you.
Do we see that with the technological changes being a big component of professional development, because of certainly the changes, talking about coding, 3D printing, cost structure, right? Is that, is that a challenge? Like, if we think about today versus five years ago, what we were paying for professional development, like, what are the, what are the biggest challenges? Obviously, time management, teachers are getting pulled in different directions, extracurricular activities, whether they coach or not. What is the biggest challenge? Is it the time? Is it the cost of those programs?
Yeah, so cost is always an issue, but we've been managing costs. I think we have a handle on that. Some really high-quality staff developers, like our math consultant, costs a lot of money. She's worth every penny. She's a research professor from NYU who teaches math methods. She's been awesome, and I've seen so much change from those teachers as a result of this work. So you have to evaluate the benefit of that. So cost, though, we look at the whole picture, and we try to manage that, and I think we've been doing a good job at the cost. I would say there's two main factors. One is, there's so many things to work on, and, you know, we could just do 50 initiatives, but teachers can't attend to that and do it all well. That would be one. The second is, when we said, one of the biggest benefits of, where you're going to see the impact of professional development is by doing it embedded, where it's happening in real time. So you're doing it during the school year. It's easier to offer it in the summers, but if you're just doing it in the summer, you're not able to really do it parallel to your learning. So if you want to do some learning, try it in the classroom, come back, reflect on it, make some adjustments, go back in the classroom, and you want that back and forth constantly. How do we balance that with the reality of the school year and not pulling teachers out of the classroom all the time? That's one of the biggest challenges.
The logistics of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think a model that works is what we're doing with this math staff developer. She'll spend a half a day working with the teachers, then they'll spend the other half of the day in the classroom, modeling lessons and coaching. They'll spend the morning developing the lesson. Here's the task we're going to do when we go in. So who's, you know, and they'll work on the task in the morning, then they'll go do it in several classes in the afternoon. That's had a really great impact. And then she'll be back the second day, and they'll reflect on it. And then they'll do, repeat that process over the second day. That has been really an interesting model. So staff developers here for two days, but they're spending one day with teachers overall, and one day in the classroom with teachers in real time, and giving feedback. That's been really powerful. There was one time we were in a seventh-grade math classroom last year, and so we had the kids, which were about 22 kids in the class, 24 kids. There were the staff developer, the classroom teacher, and about five other math teachers from the middle school. Jen and I were both in the room. I think the principal, Evan, was there. The assistant principal was there. We had like as many administrators and teachers and adults in the room as we had kids. It was pretty funny, and our kids...
The kids didn't even notice. They didn't blink.
They didn't, they were sort of like, "Oh, there's a lot of people watching." And then they went on. "Don't care." So that's really powerful.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, then. Now I have a motion to approve Byram Hills Professional Development Plan for two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty.
Still no second.
Thanks. And all in favor?
Right.
Nice job, thank you.
Thank you.
And we're down to staff reports. Turn it over to superintendent.
Okay, great. Before I get started, last board meeting, we had a Board of Education recognition, and I hope that Lara had the opportunity, or will have the opportunity, to go and look at that board meeting and see some of the words that I said. But we had a little present for you, Lara.
Thank you very much.
And we want to thank you for volunteering for this position and just talk to you about the impact that you're having on the community and how much we really learn from this board, from working so well together. So we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's so sweet.
We're sorry you missed it.
Sorry, I'm so sorry.
But the good thing is you can watch it over and over on television.
I know you will.
Yes, I will.
And the next is, I would like to report out about the Soundshore Consortium. I know that the board members are aware that we are part of the Soundshore, can't say it though, Soundshore Consortium. And that consists of eight schools altogether. It's Rice City, Rynack, Harrison, Mammarinack, White Plains, Portchester, Blind Brook, and Byram Hills. There are lots of benefits to being in this consortium. I meet with the superintendents from these schools once a month, and we talk about how we are going to support people within our districts. So for example, one superintendent will work with business officials a couple of times a year. Another will work with high school principals or elementary principals, athletic directors. I have the special education group, which I'm very happy to have, and we met recently, and I just wanted to report out a little bit on our work. It, it had two really great outcomes for me. First of all, we have some program exchanges that we can do, and we agree upon a rate that we are going to charge for children who are going to be attending some of our special education programs in other districts. That's a huge cost savings to the district. To facilitate that a little bit more, what we did in the last meeting was work on a shared document. That's a live document that talks about specific services offered and availability in those districts. So it's much easier for us and more accessible for us to know if we have a child who has needs that we can't meet in this district, or any of our consortium schools an opportunity to do that, which is very important when we're considering education for children, support services for children, and school budgets. So that was very well received, and we're working with all other districts to do that so we can tap into that a little bit more than I think we have in the past. We also talked a lot about student progress monitoring, how it occurs in other districts, and it was a real eye-opener for our district to see how other districts are looking at special education students and the services they receive, and the progress they're making to determine when they don't need those services anymore. And I think that that was a good learning for our district. We're also going to be looking at academic intervention services together as a group in our next meeting, and what our shared costs are for services, OT, PT, and speech. So I felt very good about that meeting, and I feel like it, it positions our district and other districts really well to communicate and also to share services a little bit better. The other one was, I wrote a note to the board that on November thirteenth, I'm going to be going with a few members of Lower Hudson Council School Administrators to meet with Congresswoman Nita Lowey. And this is really an effort to monitor proposed federal legislation such as tax reform. Tax reform has really been coming out in the news as a very big issue, and it's something we're concerned about. So we're hoping that she can enlighten us a little bit about the House bill and proposed overhaul of the tax code. Some things that are of big concern are the House bill putting limitations on a home buyer's ability to use their mortgage interest rates as deductions. Also, how it's going to affect the state and local tax deductions. And is there actually going to be a limited deduction just to property taxes for homeowners? And is it going to be limited to the proposed ten thousand dollars that they're claiming? And what happens is that directly impacts communities like ours. We have middle and upper-class taxpayers who are in high-cost states. And when they don't have those deductions anymore, they start to look to towns and to schools to help ease these tax burdens. So we will be meeting with her, and I'll report out to the board whatever we learn from that meeting. We'll continue that communication. And that is it for me.
Very good, thank you. Turn it back to Tim.
Yeah, just briefly. I'll be breaks. My voice will last any longer. So I just wanted to give an update on the Global Scholars Program. So you'll recall that the Byram Hills Education Foundation supported thirteen teachers and administrators to go on a trip to Nicaragua last summer as part of learning about global competency. They recently did a panel discussion with all ninth-grade students so that they could discuss their experience, what they learned from it, and get some interest with those ninth-grade students as they start getting ready to schedule classes for next year. That starts taking place in January. So they wanted to get them thinking about what Global Scholars is about, what global competency means, raising kids' awareness about what they learned and took away, so that they can get kids excited about thinking about entering the Global Scholars Program as sophomores. That was part of the process. The second process is those teachers come together, I'm meeting with them regularly through a Global Scholars Think Day to think about what they learned from that experience and how that could help us shape our curriculum, start thinking about interdisciplinary curriculum opportunities at the high school level, which is a real challenge because we're departmentalized. So how do we start breaking down the walls between departments? And part of our purpose for that trip was to get teachers thinking differently about global competency and how to write interdisciplinary curriculum. So I just wanted to give you a brief update on that.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things. One, just a follow-up from a previous board meeting. I did get a copy of the contract from the School Board Association for the school aid specialists. We took a look at that, and they charged thirteen percent for any funds that they, over five hundred thousand dollars, and fifteen percent for any funds up to, up to the five hundred thousand dollars, which was what was the original proposal that we'd received from them. And, and the board was concerned about when we would pay any fees if they recover any state aid for us. And the contract does state specifically that the district doesn't pay any fees until the district receives any of the found funds from the, from the state. So that's the, we, we did process that contract, and we're waiting to schedule the time for them to come in and start doing their review.
Fantastic.
Transportation facility, we have moved the people back, out of the temporary space, the trailers there and into the renovated space.
Oh, wow.
There's still a few.
At last.
Few punch list items that we still have to do, but they're, they're acclimating to the space quite nicely, and it is quite an improvement. The pod, which was used for record storage, the records have been moved into the old temporary space trailers, and the, the pod will be removed, I think it's being removed this week. We do have to go through the records. As usually what happens with the record storage, everything just goes into storage. There is a retention schedule that the state puts out, so we are, just started working on that last week, going through the records versus the retention schedule to see what we have to keep and what we can dispose of. So we don't just go store all these records, again, that we don't have to be keeping as, as part of our normal course of business. So when that process is completed, then the, the trailers will be removed also. So we're, we're thinking maybe, you know, hopefully by beginning or middle of December, they would be gone, the latest. And budget, we have started working on budget. We sent the budget allocations out to the principals and directors. I was in a meeting last week, got some not-so-good news about the teacher's retirement system. I think we talked about that at one other meeting, that they're changing their assumptions. With the change in assumptions, it looks like the rate on salaries is going to go from nine point eight percent to as much as ten and a half to eleven percent. So it doesn't sound like much of an increase, you know, one point two percent increase, but when you're talking about a, you know, forty million-plus instructional salary base, it is an impact. It's going to be over four hundred thousand dollars for that one line in the budget. So that, that was some not-so-good news. The employer's retirement, employees' retirement system, also known as the New York State Local Retirement System, the rates for tier three, four, and five have actually decreased slightly. So we do have some relief there, not a lot. The salary base is much smaller on the, the non-instructional, but it is a decrease and not an increase. And tier six has remained about the same. So we will get a little relief on the, the ERS. Health insurance, this time of year, they're usually very conservative. They're saying probably five to six percent. The last two years, it's been around in the four, a four point two, five percent increase in premiums. So we're hoping that the five and six is a conservative, and it actually would come in lower than that. OSIs has told us that they were trying to keep their services under two percent, which is good. That's a fairly large expenditure for the district. State aid, I'm a little bit concerned at this point. The state is projecting quite a significant deficit going forward, and when that happens, a lot of times, they don't have state aid increases. We're hoping that it's not a state aid decrease or another gap adjustment like they just get rid of after a few years. Also, on the revenue side, there's a change in a couple of pilots, so we're waiting to hear from the town how that's going to impact the district also. Debt service actually is decreasing by a couple hundred thousand dollars, so you'll see some relief in the, the amount that we have to budget for debt service. In terms of inflation, you know, we are capped at two percent or inflation, whichever is less. The, the inflation rate has been running at about one point nine percent, so just under two percent. So that, that will be actually a help for the district. Last year, I think the inflation rate was like one point two six or something like that. So the, closer to two, the larger the tax levy that we can have. We are waiting for the assessment growth, which is the other factor in the tax cap. But the, the inflation rate looks like it may help us out in this case. So those are the highlights right now, and as I said, we're just, just kicked it off and, you know, buckle your seatbelts because here we go.
Almost there. Almost there. Thank you, Jim. And that brings us to board reports. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the Education Foundation again. A bunch of us were at Screenagers, was a documentary that they showed at the high school, and what I thought was just fantastic. It was really across the board. It wasn't just high school, it was middle school, it was, a lot of wampus was represented. The auditorium at the high school was packed, and it ties right into our wellness initiative district-wide. So I guess that was one of three documentaries that the Education Foundation is going to be having. I think the next one is January, February. January. So really well done. And town liaison did meet, and we did talk about pilots, and we talked about town assessables. The town would like to coordinate with our school calendar. They asked if, if they see a draft when it's in process. So I think June, we're going to share it with them just so they can plan accordingly around school events. So we're going to do that. And we talked about the Route twenty-two sign at the high school on AAA, and wanted to get some direction from them on that if we wanted to replace that.